Part of my first.
Oh, okay. Then I'll wait. Or picture one of my.
No.
Okay.
Small hook for the keys I got.
I always want to know what's going on. Why you were.
I can't even.
I'm just. I'm bothered.
Yeah, I don't know. But I think. I don't think I have my own. I'm out. Too long. But I think. I appreciate that.
That'd be pretty good, though.
I like, I like graphics.
From the, uh. A little.
Want some minutes?
Pretty hard to be on the back.
I'm sure on these.
That's why I didn't. I'm sorry. How long is that? You just.
How you feeling?
Better.
Getting slowly better over time.
Wasn't that on the other arm last night? Wednesday or Tuesday?
Yeah. Whatever's going to be this Wednesday.
Ah, dear.
All right, there we go. Six five. Welcome, all of you, to our Bath Township meeting, which is Monday, October 4th. What we're going to do is pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna need approval of agenda. Okay, we're gonna need approval of agenda.
So move.
Oh, you're right. Snake with the recordable fault, then you can do.
Okay.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Butler Challenger here. Mr. Wisswasser?
Here.
Mr. Amorici?
Here.
Mr. Bensy?
Here.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yeah.
Thank you. Now we're going to do number three, which is the approval of the agenda.
Right.
Oh, I need to.
It was already on.
I was gonna say, I thought you had it on.
No, he wants.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
I have two amendments. Under twelve committee reports, I'd like to do two reports on the July committee and on the State House School Committee.
Your committee reports, right?
Yes.
Okay. So twelve would be A and B added?
Yeah.
Okay. So any other changes? All right, we're looking at it for approval.
I saw a move.
Yep, okay. Need a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amorici?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, boards, do you have any score for the council of interest? Nope, here's none, okay. We have public statements, number one. We're limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody who wants to make a public statement?
I don't want to do it at the end. That's not on your agenda.
Yeah.
Well, this would be on the agenda. I'm sorry, yes. Some will have to wait for two. All right, we have none in this time for agenda items. That was my mistake. Do we have any county, state, federal, or other agencies? Doesn't seem to be any. Consent agenda, number seven. And these are recordable without discussion.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Ms. Howe?
Uh, yes, says about discussion.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss? All right. Number eight is the approval of the minutes. And three. And okay, that would be board in November minutes for September 20th. Any changes? Nope, here's fifty. Good job. I never worked before. Okay. Do you prefer the call vote to approve? Need a motion. I'll motion to approve the minutes of September 20th, 2021. Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amorici?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Close the pencil. Okay. We are on nine, which is approval. Vouchers.
Vouchers.
I would move approval of vouchers. Can I change?
Second.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Wis- I'm sorry. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Amorici?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Now on ten, which is the Treasury report. It says there are no attachments, but apparently there is.
Lot of slots planned to leave. Use things that brought to the board. I have this also for anybody that would, if anybody in the audience would be interested in some of the stuff I have this. First thing I had started to report this evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm bringing you the, you have a document I put on your desk that comes from Michigan Association of County Treasurers. And it deals with foreclosure timelines and talking about taxes. At the previous meeting, this last time we had a meeting, this last two weeks ago, I was kind of surprised, I guess, or shocked. I heard a lady stood up at podium and talked about she was concerned about coming and speaking at the township board meeting, that she was concerned about her. This didn't get put in the minutes, but it is on the video. Because she was concerned about the fact that maybe she may or may not have been late on her taxes and she didn't know if that thing could come up or she realized that maybe she was taking an awful chance. First thing I'm gonna tell you is I can assure each and every one of you who is sitting at this table that you have no authority, the same as I, to take anybody's house from them or to foreclose on them if they don't pay their taxes. Absolutely zero, as well as anybody in this room. Unless somebody in this room happens to be a circuit judge. I don't see one out there. But here's, so I researched this and I went, I pulled this from the county treasurer's office and I pulled the foreclosure timeline schedule because it has changed in the last few years. Because I wanted to see just exactly what the statute did say today. There's lots of different things that I found in this process. It was kind of interesting to look at it. But for instance, this document we have, it refers to, on the second page or, not on the first page, it refers to an acronym, which our government's called FGU. That's a foreclosing government unit. Michigan is one, has eighty-three counties total in Michigan, seven of which are, Clinton County is one of seven who has chosen not to opt out of the FGU with the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan is our government foreclosing unit here. They're the only ones in this county that who can foreclose on a house or take somebody's house from them. The process goes through the state of Michigan. And this is done by the county board of commissioners and treasurer's office of the county. During deliberation, has voted to stay with the state of Michigan as seven other counties have out of the eighty-three. And they're the only ones who will handle the foreclosure process. The foreclosure process actually takes place in circuit court. If you follow this timeline, the board members have had this and this is available if anybody else would like it. I got extra copies and I'm more willing to make more people copies. But there's a four-year process. You asked me this before the meeting. It's a four-year process that takes place. And different, the statute has changed in the last year, which is why it got me thinking about this. Because now if somebody loses their home, their home is sold, and the home is sold for taxes. It sells for more money than what the homeowner or the complainant owes on it. By law, they are eligible to go back to the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan being the foreclosure unit. People have to pay them back the difference between what the house was sold for and what the house actually, what was owed on it. So my main thing is what troubled me was. It troubled me, and I don't know if the woman didn't know this or what the trouble was, but nobody here can take somebody's house, including myself. I collect taxes. I turn my tax roll over. If you look at this timeline here on March 1st, the only taxes get turned over to the county. The county works the process through multiple tax bills. Actually, up to six to twelve tax bills could be sent out before the process actually goes to the state of Michigan. But it's a long, lengthy process. It takes four years. And in the end, not even the county government can take your house from you. It's the state of Michigan doing that. That's the way they've designed it to work. It's how county people at the county want it to work and they feel most confident in this. Some counties opted out of this thing in talking with the county treasurer's office about this a little bit and talking to others. The reason why they opted out of this was because there's money in it. There's money in the counties for taking and handling this, for processing fees and everything else. Clinton County thought that they didn't want to be involved in this and I give them kudos for that. And I'm glad the county feels that way. But that's what the process is for that. If anybody, like I said, wants more information of this, I have these, I have more of them. I credit off. I'm more than willing to make copies for somebody if they're interested in how this process works. It's a very lengthy process. It takes four years for it to happen. And different way statute today is if they sell your house, if FGU sells your house, then you still, if there's money up and above what was owed for the liens that was placed on the house, then the homeowner is entitled to get their share of their money back. And that's changed. Some people think that's a good thing, some people don't. But out of eighty-three counties, we're one of seven who are still working with the state of Michigan on that, which is the way I feel is a good way to do business. With that being said, the only other extra thing there is, is we do have on taxes, and I got a couple of things to talk about. We do have personal delinquent property taxes. Now that is a little different handle. That's not the same thing as F alarm taxes, which is real and actual, is homes and properties other than personal property. Personal property taxes is something that gets written off every so many years. Currently, right here for next, this month, in two thousand, in October 14th of this month, we're gonna write off the 2015 delinquent personal property taxes that couldn't be collected or had not been collected. Obviously, the fifteen taxes, I started back here on the year of sixteen, so that'll wrap up pretty well the eight years that I was gone from here. But we, the county is writing off twenty-nine thousand five hundred and five dollars and fifty one cents county-wise of delinquent personal property taxes. Bath Township represents fifteen percent of that. There's actually only two parcels that are actually current parcels, that are active parcels who are not bankrupt, whose people have not been deceased or businesses have failed and gone away. So that's really not too bad. When we get from sixteen till the current year, we have very, very little. We're probably two or three percent is what we have. We've did a pretty good job. Every year we send out, as we have, we did our due diligence. We've sent out our notices timely, like we're supposed to, so we're not looked bad upon from the county. But there is, they are gonna write off here on the fourteenth of this month, the county-wise, we're gonna write off twenty-nine thousand five oh five fifty one. That's Bath Township's share of that is fifteen percent. It's a matter of two parcels. And we're really in pretty good shape for what we have from the personal property taxes. That, we do have a say in. We can put a lien on it. We can take and do things to get them, as long as the personal property doesn't have a title or a deed to it, we can do that. And that's where the title comes in big on a lot of this equipment and things that you can't. If it comes with a title, then you can't, you can't go back and try to repossess it or try to hold for tax sale or anything else. So we're in pretty good shape with our delinquent personals for the year of 2015, and that's the write-off. That's the five-year write-off on that. Last thing I want to talk to you about, and I apologize, I don't have a lot of handouts, but we're busy in this place these days. On Tuesday, the 21st, at 9:00 AM, we met with Aaron Stevens from Maynard Disterson. And I think I talked about this a little bit in the past. When we talked about, I've been concerned about our changes that we've done in the recent, the last year. And I've been watching, I thought maybe we'd see something, but we, unless I missed it, I didn't see anything in writing. And the ladies are shaking their heads over there. I'm true about that, so I didn't miss it. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about it. I'm gonna cover myself a little bit here. I feel that our changes are not representing what our, or some of our business we do on a daily basis, inherent cash receiving and things have changed. And I pointed out some of what the effect when you change something on one side, how it could affect the other things. And collecting money is the big deal. And we'll start with, there's four different departments that we do what we call transmittal sheets with on a daily basis where we collect money, or sometimes on a weekly basis. It depends on the department, how much money we're talking and when they're collecting it. But the building and zoning, or building permits is one of them. We went, we had a very good review with Aaron Stevens over that. Back in 2010 was the last time they did an internal control, assessment, internal controls for that. And it hasn't been updated since 2010. Unfortunately, I only have one copy of this. I think there's a couple of those floating around somewheres. But I only have one of these. What we did is we had Maynard come in and Maynard is reassessing this as he did for us before, but it was a different name, but obviously they changed their name. And we're gonna have a new set of internal controls written with the types of businesses we're doing right now and how we've changed our structure in here and how we're doing things, how we're collecting money, how we're, we got new departments or merged together and things like that. And we've lost some missing pieces here that alarms me. Building and zoning is a big one. The reason why that alarms me, here a couple, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, I told you that with the township SDV included and increased by eighteen million dollars. And but yet our building and zoning revenues didn't keep pace with that. They went down. So that makes me wonder, as a numbers guy, why is that? Why do we, how could we not have more building permits and stuff like that? But yet we got eighteen million dollars more worth of assessment to do the splits and sales and billing and so on and so forth. So to do a correct accounting for that, you have to keep good accounting records. And we reviewed the process of how we're doing this and we're gonna take, and they came up with some new ideas and some ideas, and we're gonna go to some new ideas and are looking into that. It's gonna take, obviously, the first thing we have, we have our written Bible from the accountants. And then second of all, we'll have to get with our software people and we'll have to see how we implement this stuff. And that'll take care of the building and zoning in that department. That's a huge deal. I'm really concerned about that. The police department is another one we get transmittal sheets from. And we're gonna improve our readiness on that and maybe how often we're getting them. We're getting back to where we should be instead of where we currently are. Senior Center is in pretty good shape. I was pretty proud of that. I thought Senior Center was pretty good, but Maynard did pick that apartment and he mentioned to me that we give out tokens and things with, that are handwritten numbers on them and things like that. And we shouldn't have that. We should have a, in government accounting, you should always have a pre-numbered thing with printed numbers from computers so that they can't be just made up as you go. We're talking about four, four or five hour lunches here, I believe it is, but it's still, that's what you hired them for, to give you an opinion, that's what they did. So that's the only thing they found wrong there. The last one was a big one. It was hot for me. I'm not real thrilled with the way things go with the farmers market. I like the farmers market, I believe in it, and I'm gonna make sure that everything goes well with it because I think they do a great job of taking care of themselves for what, no more money than what they get. They haven't had a fundraiser in a couple of years and they're still surviving. And they're doing great. But we needed to have some accounting work needed to be upgraded there as far as how we're accounting for things and who's actually doing it. The money needs to be accounted for and turned into the deputy treasurer. It needs to come to the treasurer, not any other department. End of story. And that pretty well got identified. And picking the people who even run the farmers market, that's something that we call, talk about this table. You talk about everything, the money. You didn't talk about the money. And you can say what you want to say, but to keep them profitable and to keep them going, it needs to be done correctly. And that was my purpose of doing that. I'm happy to answer any questions about this. As soon as we get this back, we do this on a regular basis. I think probably was here, Ryan, last time this was done, 2010, maybe, or maybe not.
Just after that.
But this needs to be done. It has full charts. Once again, colored full charts. It shows you exactly how the process is supposed to work, where it's supposed to go, and everything's supposed to happen with it. And it was a good thing to have the assessment of our internal controls and have this done. We've had five pretty good audits, perfect audits. And I'm a little bit nervous this time because I don't see things going as I think it ought to be going around here. I'm not opposed to change, but I'm opposed to not doing things in accordance to what they ought to be done. If you can change any, you'll change. But just make sure you do things right. I guess that's my piece of that, what bothers me. That's all I have for tonight. Other than you have your stuff in your mailbox. Make sure you get your mailbox material for your vouchers that you approved tonight and your revenues for the month or for the two weeks. And the vouchers are on the desk. Please stop and sign them before you leave tonight. If you have any other questions, feel free to ask me. Once again, if anybody in the audience is interested in one of these full charts from the foreclosure thing, I have some of them available. So we make them available. And just want everybody to know that nobody here can take somebody's house or are we in the business of taking somebody's house or property? But that bothered me when I got sent to the day. And I dug into that and I looked at that because I don't think that, that's not what our role is here. Thank you.
Any questions? I have one.
Yes.
I have a very simple one. In the backtrack, are you saying that of eighty-three counties, only seven of them?
State of Michigan's only handling seven of them, from my knowledge right now from talking to the county. You did with county treasurers, I thought.
It's amazing.
And it's done by county. It's done by the, the county board of commissioners have a say in it, along with very close work with the county treasurer. And it's done, and that, there is money in it. Some of your bigger urban areas, your bigger counties, they have a lot more urban areas. They get involved in this because there's a lot more. If you think about it, there's a lot more houses and things like that. In Clinton County, I ain't gonna say we're very fortunate to live in Clinton County because this is a rural area and we're not subject to a lot of things that a lot of other areas are. In this case, I think, I think it's a good thing, but we were involved with them. And interestingly enough, there is a lot of them. Obviously, there's a few in upper peninsula and there's, there's, they're scattered throughout all of Michigan as well. One of seven of those, but we're part of seven.
Okay. Any other comments? Apparently none. All right, so we go on to eleven, which is community appointments. Before we do that, I'd like to read something to you, not only for the board's information, but general public. So bear with me as I read. It says, "In the near future, Bath Township is going to be asked to do some difficult questions or decisions regarding the building expansion of our sewer system." That's why Brad was here, correct? Okay. Historically, it appears that the last time there was a major sewer initiative, it involved the water treatment plant expansion as well as the rehabilitation and creation of a new sub-pump, of new sub-pumps. In December of 1976, Bath Charter Township voted to authorize, I love this number, twelve million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. In order for step two to complete, to go on to step three, they forated an amount that dealt with water township of two thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Most likely, that was two million, I would have guessed. And the township's share for step two to work. I believe, I believe trustee Rosecrans was there at that time.
Yeah.
Okay, because I was gonna say, it says in the resolution that you were there. So that was a decision for you that you had to make, which was.
Don't tell the year very loud.
Just a few years ago, so it is that. This was subsequently taken as a project in 1978. It was completed in 1980 for the cost of the twelve million, three hundred and two thousand. State federal grants provided about nine million, seven hundred and fifty. Our cost at that time for Bath Township was about three hundred and eighty thousand. Today, I'm asking the board of trustees permission to accept Jeremy Taliber, who is sitting over there, as the newest commissioner for the Bath Charter Township to serve on the building. There's a vacancy created by the resignation of our treasurer, Steve Wisswasser, until January of 2024. As all members, Mr. Taliber would receive his thirty-five dollar per diem from the SCUMA per meeting. He would be responsible to find, he would be responsible to attend the meetings once a month. But most important, he would be carrying one vote as our appointed or our elected superintendent, Miss Karen Kildebrand. She also has one vote. So Bath Township has two votes at the SCUMA board. I would also note that Mr. Taliber is a recipient of the SCUMA services. He is a vice chair of our sewer board of appeals. Mr. Taliber has lived in the community most of his life. He's passionate about his community and he volunteers his time and his family's with community activities. With his job capacity, he's responsible for about a hundred and sixty-plus employees and manages different budgets for all projects. And again, I am asking board of trustees permission to accept Mr. Jeremy Taliber as the newest commissioner for the Bath Charter Township to serve on the SCUMA board, filling the vacancy created by the residency of our treasurer, Steve Wisswasser. So having said that, I guess I need a motion.
Ma'am supervisor, I'm hoping to accept Jeremy Taliber, um, replace him on the SCUMA board for the term expiring in January of two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we do like, we'll call the, oh, trustee, you can press.
It's my understanding that the SCUMA board can make commitments on our behalf that we will then be held to in terms of finances, is that true?
That we'll be held to them, I think that's an agreement that is done. We have two votes as opposed to the township having five, is that correct? The city of Duett has two, is that correct?
Yes, there's a number of people that serve from the four-
So it's the board's decision.
The SCUMA board's decision. Right, but that we then would be leveraging funding from our internal sewer funds.
Yes, that's what the board determines.
Right. So I, it would be a no vote on Mr. Taliber, not because of any of his credentials, I think he's well-credentialed. I think it's not appropriate for a non-board member to serve on the SCUMA board since they are making commitments on this board's behalf. I think it's helpful, if not necessary, for our board to have control of that since we're the ones who are going to have to function to pay that off.
I understand, and I did some heavy thinking because this is really, really a very, very important committee. Probably one of the most important that we have. And I think Mr. Taliber is very aware of that. But in their articles of corporation, they say it's up to us to determine who it is that serves. It doesn't say you have to serve a board member. They, I have talked to them before and their comments have been, they usually have done that, but with Steve resigning, I talked to trustee Benzey and that wasn't something that he wanted. So I went outside and I think Mr. Taliber is more than qualified to be able to make decisions for whatever it is that we're gonna make decisions for, for SCUMA. So that's my, my response. And you're more than welcome to vote for this.
I'd like to expand.
No. Trustee, treasurer.
They, I think, I think everybody at this table is going to have to make these decisions and you're gonna be involved in the financial decisions of the SCUMA board of directors or of the sewer authority or the sewer system. The township sewer system, it is thirteen point eight million dollars today we have in assets that belong to us from, from the sewer authority. Uh, we, we have, uh, interestingly enough, we have, we have more than that in the way of debt that we all, we're looking at rebuilding the plant, the two and four point four million dollars this board is gonna have to take and sit down when the dust settles here eventually, hopefully when things settle down, if it does settle down in the next couple of months. And you guys will start looking, taking, and how you're gonna finance your part, your share of that. You're gonna owe roughly, I think it's currently twenty-seven percent of that rebuild project is what you're gonna owe because it goes on flow and that's what our flow is, it goes to the, to the authority. By no means, just because you're electing the person, um, to appointing a person to go over there and serve, does that mean that the ball stops with them to make a decision? They're not gonna be able to make a decision because the money still has to come from this board and has to be appropriated from this month, this board. All the debt in the sewer system there is, is guaranteed by the good faith and credit of the general fund. The good faith and credit of the general fund is what, what backs the sewer fund. In the event that the sewer fund goes broke or we don't have enough money to pay our bills, the taxpayers will have to hook for paying for the sewer system. And, and, oh, that, that's, that's part of that, right there, is part of the responsibility. It was brought to my attention this last week, we talked, I talked with another trustee, we talked about the fact that we had a lot of money, we were setting on cash, we're setting out right now in our, our cash account, in our general fund. Like, yeah, we are. I was gonna say, my first roadie law did this, I bonded, I think, probably seven times since I've been in all the years I've been on board, maybe more than that, I don't know, I forgot, I've been too long. But, but the, the, the bottom line is, you have to have accessible finances and collateral and money to be able to take them back up when you're applying for a bond, to be able to back up to good faith and credit for what the, what paragraph three talks about in the bonding section, to be able to talk about funding and stuff. This board decides the financial issues of the decisions of the, of the township, the SCUMA board. What that person does over there is a unique job over there because that person is on an authority board and authority board is like any other authority board, they're, they're exempt from anybody telling them what they can or can't do. However, they have to come to us and ask us for money to take and do their, do what they wanna do. And, and this person, whoever, I don't care who it is, any person you put out here in the audience, you put on that authority board, they can do anything about asking this board about the finances of how they're gonna pay for it. Um, and they did just recently send us a letter, and I think you probably got the same letters I got, where the authority board asked their attorney if they could take and bond and pay for this stuff through the SRF, which is, was, was helping out with this-
State revolving fund.
Um, they asked them if they could take and revolve for this as, as the authority board over there, as one big group, instead of going through each municipality and bonding and paying for the repairs. You look at us, ours is about four, four point five million dollars, who knows, it goes up and down every day. You take somebody like Duett, they're looking at somewhere between ten and eighty, ten million dollars. They have five members on their board and I think there's only one or two maybe, um, that are currently elected people. One's township manager, seems what we have, and the other one is an elected trustee. But they have three other members that are just members at large, but they have a lot more ownership. Incidentally, a lot of things, a lot of it hasn't been said while this hasn't been talked about it, but we talked about it, when we talked about the rebuilding of the plant. This thing is gonna change because when you rebuild the plant, you're gonna increase capacity. When you increase capacity in accordance to the, the charter of the authority, the bylaws, you're gonna increase membership as well as being on the board. And you're gonna be able, there's a good chance, I'm, I'm sure, we're gonna have another member. Somebody, you're gonna have to appoint another member to the board because we're gonna have more control because we're doing it by flow and we're gonna have more flow and if the plant gets larger, we're gonna have more ownership and so you're gonna have another member. Um, I'm not voting, I didn't make my motion against anybody on this board, but I'm gonna tell you something, whether you wanna hear it or not, you can hear it because it's, I guess I get the choice to be able, that's what I, my, because I'm elected, I get to do this. It's time for some new blood, to let other people into this thing, let other people into our government here and move forward and have positive thinking about this stuff. Don't look at everything negative. You still are the people who are making the decisions financially to take and decide what you're gonna do. I'm, I'm hard on Karen, I'm gonna tell you that right now. That takes, I'm probably meaner to her than I should be. I'm not mean in the way of being mean mean, but I'm just, I'm very outspoken about some of this stuff. The sewer thing is very important and I think I told somebody else in an email today about that, email me about this, it's a very important thing and you need, they cannot sell yourself short and don't be scared of what somebody's new ideas are gonna be, you know, what they're gonna do. If it wasn't for new ideas or thinking new, I wouldn't be here today. I think you all agree with that. I, I, nineteen ninety-six, I got appointed to this board and I was on that, on that board, on the SCUMA authority board, and I replaced the guy who was county commissioner, who was one of the founding founders of our SCUMA board. And, and I, I learned and I grew from it and I got to learn all the ins and outs of it. For me, it was great because eventually I became the treasurer and I was involved in the finances of it, so I was involved in both sides of it. But I, I just think that, I think you need to have, I, I really do, I, I hear what you're saying, Ryan. And it, it's taken a little bit of a, of a chance here, but the, the guy's got credentials. I don't know, the guy can have them. I know, I think I know who the father is, but that's all I can tell you about it. But I know I've read his credentials, I looked at it the way it should be looked at, I didn't look at it on a biased, sort of way, and I'm not saying anybody else is. I just, I just think that you guys need to take it. We need, you can have all this change and you can do all the changes you want, but you better, you better take care of business a little bit. And that's, that's what I think you're doing here and no matter what, I think you're gonna have another member on the board again before you're done here. There's nothing wrong with the treasurer being involved with the meetings and going to some of these things that need to be done, going to as far as the financial parts of it and, and coming back and talking to the board and, or the board members can be involved as far as that goes. But this authority board thing, it's about the operation of the authority, it's not about the operation of the sewer fund here at home. That's ours and that's this board's, this is this board's responsibility. If you goof up, or we goof up, if I goof up, Phil goofs up, Marie goofs up, it's guaranteed by the good faith and credit of the taxpayers. That means the people that live out here in the country are gonna pay for the sewer for you four board members, which incidentally, you all live on the sewer. And, and, and nobody else that sits at this table does live on the sewer system. But that means that we would pay for your guys' increases to run your sewer system, but if we make bad mistakes or bad moves, then, then, uh, we'd have representation here. We have a lot of representation for people that's on the sewer authority. Al, you was on board back when they put this thing through in nineteen seventy-six, Mr. Spagnola, who was, who bailed you out of this?
He did.
The state representative who, who did this. I mean, I was, I was probably ten years old, I don't wanna come out of that. I don't wanna date you, Al, but-
Yeah.
But my, my sixty years here, but maybe the, the, but that's, that's what it was.
Yeah, the, the board at that time went ahead with the sewer without any money and said that they would hope that they would get the state to give us some money. Uh, we fought, it was almost to the end when we had to pay for it, that, uh, the state finally come through and give us a grant.
Thanks, Mr. Spagnola, state representative for our area.
Yeah. You think things are tough now, you should have been back there when we had all that money owed and no way of paying for it.
But as far as, as far as the, I've heard a lot of people say a lot of things about me stepping down from that, but it's for the best thing, it's for me to be taking care of things that here and not take care of the daily, uh, goings on of what goes on for sewer authorities. Pick your battles and what you can do and what you can't do. And that, that's the battles here. And, and sometimes we don't like what I say, but I mean, I'll always tell you the truth. So that's, that's the way it is. I don't know if it makes you feel better or not, it's not against you, Ryan.
Trustee.
So when I was looking at this, I know we're talking about increasing our sewer capacity in Bath Township. And if we do that, we increase our ownership, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So then it's gonna cost us more for this next bond because we own more of it.
Depends on when we do it. Depends if you buy, if you buy high, it's all low. The trick is to buy low and sell high later on, and then this, this-
Well, I just thought I'd put it out there for everybody, you know, this is very complicated.
I call for a question.
Mr. Rosenkrantz?
Yes.
Mr. Kuenzless?
No.
Mr. Number Eighteen?
Yes.
Mr. Benzey?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler?
Yes.
How your troubles start. Alright. Thank you very much to the folks, appreciate it. Township Committee, again, A and B, okay? Jason?
Okay, so I just wanted to provide an update to the, and the community about two special committees that were formed this past year. Um, the first one, sorry, I have been told I need to have better posture, so the people that currently can hear me. Um, so I, I, so we have two special committees that were formed that are primarily staffed by citizens, community members, a wide range of community members. But I'll first talk about the broadband base. So I, during the pandemic, we have all experienced shortages of internet access or no access at all. I, and these are old concerns that have been shared. And we have attempted before to form a broadband committee to identify, you know, what can we do as a township to support our community in having access to affordable, reliable, and fast, high-speed internet. And so back in March, we, we did form a community member, our community, community urban committee um, of local experts and we've had everyone from folks who work in the IT industry to people who work in government relations. So I, we formed three work groups, one on community outreach, who put the effort into looking into a survey, community survey to learn more, also to leverage that data for grant applications as they come down. We had another one on government relations where we had some really top-notch people who took the time to meet with our representatives to learn more, to learn more about the grant opportunities and how we can allocate federal funds to meet these needs. And then the third one was an IT infrastructure, which is to, they, they looked into what our infrastructure is and to make a set of recommendations about what are some of our options for improving our internet. And so I, we had a strong flurry of activity, a lot of hours were put into that work group. Um, there's a little bit of a lull during the summer, but we came back together last, uh, last week, I think that's last week, I said, on September twenty-ninth. And each of the work groups provided a set of recommendations about how we wanna move forward. And so all three work groups provided, in an open forum that was facilitated by a consultant from public sector consultants, I, I, a set of recommendations. The chair of that committee, Kathy Zell, is in the process of organizing that information. She's gonna bring that back to a smaller group within the broadband task force to then polish it up and then provide, send that out for feedback from the full task force members. And then that report will be sent to the planning commission. I anticipate that that will happen in the next two or three weeks. And then the planning commission will need to deliberate on it and then forward a set of recommendations. And so we're trying to do this process properly, which, we're leveraging our community resources, the experts that we have in our community, expertise that we don't have here on the board, and to run it through our planning commission, which really keeps an eye on our infrastructure and how the, how broadband may fit in, across all the various components of our infrastructure. So I'm really excited about this. I want another update with that, we have hired and contracted with public sector consultants to support a community survey where we're gonna gather representative data on people's actual experiences and speeds of their internet and ways in which it has been helpful or not helpful. I, and so over the next few months, we will be administering that survey. I, I wanna stress the importance of that data. What we're working towards is to, there's a quote here, to be shovel-ready, meaning when we apply for grants, when we have all our ducks in a row, we have our information, we can say X percent of our community has reliable internet or does not have reliable internet. We've reached out, we've had public input, this makes us competitive for those funds. And so this is the best way, best strategy for us as a community to, I, I, build our infrastructure and create a space where we have high-speed internet that is going to leverage more federal funds than our local funds. So that's the first update. Any questions on broadband?
Lobbying firm again. Who was it?
Lobbying firm?
Well, before we were contracted.
Oh, public sector consultants. So we chose public sector consultants because of their reputation, I, I, not only in the nonprofit world, but the state and local governments. They have an impeccable reputation, they do this work day in and day out. And so we wanted to make sure that when we present our survey results, that's, that name is attached to it and someone says, "I can trust those data, I can trust those results." So that's, that's the purpose of why we did that. Any other questions? Alright, part B, Safe Fronds to School. So a few weeks back, I, we had a, a, made a resolution to look into applying for a federal grant called Safe Fronds to School. This is a grant program that will pay for infrastructure and programming that will improve the safety of kindergarten through eighth grade students walking into and from school. And so the primary emphasis there is sidewalks, but it can include bike pathways, woodland trails. It does also include all aspects, not just sidewalks. So think about crosswalks, lighting, signage, striping on the road. And so part of that is, so, so we determined that we should go after these funds. Now, we're in the planning process, we have not developed an application, we're in the process of gathering the data and the information that we need to compile into a grant application. And so I, we have, I, kind of interesting that we, we've, we are the recipients of I, I, grant support through Michigan State University. So they provide us with technical support to ensure that we conduct all required elements of the application process adequately and professionally. And so we did have to pay a small matching portion of that, just to show that we have skin in the game. So we did that. Our first event, besides some orientation meetings where we brought together community members, we have about fifteen community members that represents Bath schools, the church, churches, I think right now we have Bath United, not that there's a church. Clinton County Road Commission, we have, I'm gonna forget all, all the different, we have the Bath Police Department, of course, we have the Bath Township Board that's represented on this committee. And then we have several community members. We've got community members who represent Bath Historical Society and the Webster Road Committee. We have community members that, again, I'm, I'm gonna forget all the different, we have a large group of representations. So as we have done some planning, planning meetings, about this last Friday, October one, we did what's called a walking audit. And so this was a MSU facilitated, facilitated community activity where we went through, we had a structure for evaluating the state of our sidewalks and, and I, we had three groups of community members with MSU leads, both professors as well as very good students, who actively listened and reported to the feedback that that community members had on their sidewalks. And so we had two police officers who attended, which was incredibly helpful. Ms. Hildebrandt, our supervisor, and George Baker were also there in attendance. So we had, as MSU explained to me this morning, you know, we had tremendous turnout for that, more than what they typically see. And so I, so MSU has, it recorded all that information, they're going to compile that and then this Thursday, we're having a Safe Fronds to School kickoff event, hopefully at the pavilion in Cousins Park. If not, it'll be at the Bath Township Library. But at that event, MSU is going to bring that information back to community members and community members are gonna have a second look at that information and have an opportunity to add additional experiences and observations about how the children walk to and from Bath and where we may have, where we may wanna prioritize our efforts. And so, again, this is a, this- And so, again, this is a, the first step of that planning process. The second step will be kickoff meeting, and then we'll be gathering information directly with students and teachers on this as we go forward over the next few months with anticipated application data from the community. And so, any questions about Safe France to School?
You said it was a small amount, that you had to pay MSU?
Yes, yes, we contracted with them for $4,500. So in the end, when we submit an application, we will submit an application for $460,000, $440,000 of which will go towards infrastructure, another $20,000 to support program, educational programs for safe passageways.
So they'll lower you for the $4,500?
I'm not sure the nature of the contract that was between MSU and the superintendent.
We were committed to, we proved that in one of our budget limits.
Thank you. I should have asked, going backwards, for the work group doing the broadband. I mean, you organized or contracted with public sector, remember to tell her about public sector.
I think we committed up to $20,000 for the time. The design of the process, the implementation, and then the reporting back out to us.
Usually they have their money upfront, so they already, they have it. Okay? Good, okay?
I believe we, I mean, I don't want to speak out. Typically, these things you have a schedule for billing and it's based on work completed, not.
So I don't, you shouldn't anticipate anything until after the first possibly month of, of work.
Yeah, no, good work.
Any other questions about Safe France to School? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I took the notes, I'm losing my place here. Okay. We did the completed work, we're on unfinished business, 13, introduction and discussion. Superintendent Hildebrandt?
Thank you. In your packet, you received an amended resolution for the Cherry Street abandonment by the Clinton County Road Commission. In that amended resolution, it indicated that the abandoned Cherry Street right-of-way, excuse me, right-of-way, there's a lot of words there, would remain on the plat as a private right-of-way until such time a circuit court enters an order amending the plat under the Land Division Act, determining allocation to the adjacent property owners or township. As you recall, there are four adjacent property owners that have been present at a couple of our past couple of meetings that have an interest in this. So at this time, I do not believe, the board may of course disagree with me and wish to take some action, but I don't believe any further action is required by the Bath Board of Trustees in this matter.
All right, so any questions? All right, you're good. Now we're going to be the items for action. Now, I have a question, they're asking for a closed session, but I'm not, we'll show, go ahead. Superintendent Hildebrandt, if they have to explain this, because I just received it, so I know nothing about this.
Okay. So we received, at our last meeting, you took a vote to receive an appeal on a Freedom of Information Act request.
You did take a vote.
I'm sorry?
No, you did take a vote.
Yes, you did take a vote to accept it. The board can move to a closed session to consider a legal opinion from our attorney on how to proceed with that Freedom of, excuse me, Freedom of Information Act appeal. I just need to slow down my words apparently. That requires a two-thirds vote, if you'd like to go into closed session and discuss the legal opinion on the appeal.
All right, I have, I have a question, because in your fee of information, it states that we have to know the statutory basis for the closed session?
It's to discuss a legal opinion from our lawyer.
Oh, so it's not, it's not what it says here with MCL 15.28?
Legal opinions are items that are exempt from being discussed in public, so it, yes.
Well, it says state or federal, so is it state or federal?
It's state, okay.
It says state or federal, okay. I still have one more question, just so you're clear on what we're doing, what we're supposed to be doing. This has to do with, I'm assuming, this piece that I just got from our board, which is requesting public records?
Correct.
Okay. So we have to discuss in closed session whether we distributed these.
We are going to discuss the legal opinion from our legal counsel on how to proceed.
Okay.
We will take no action, when we come back from closed session, we may take action.
No, I, I get that.
We're going to discuss our options.
Okay, so it isn't, it's more for maturity, more than it is the section 8, H.
That's why it says to consult with our attorney on a legal opinion regarding the Freedom of Information Act appeal by Gallagher Law.
To consider material exempt from discussion, doesn't say.
Legal opinion is exempt.
But it doesn't say from our attorney, okay. No, when I got it and I looked at it, and I didn't quite, so I started doing some research on it, and went to the open meetings, and of course, their section H says to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. So we're saying now it's state statute, correct? Okay, that's, because that was a little misleading. Okay, that's one thing I needed to make sure I understood. And then it goes on. Okay, okay.
My memo explains the recommendation. It outlined section 8H of the Open Meetings Act to consult with our attorney on a legal opinion regarding a Freedom of Information Act appeal by Gallagher Law.
The problem is, the packet that I got, the open meeting, always up to 4, 246. So I had to do a little more digging to figure out where you were coming with the 268, 48. That was.
It's from state law.
That's because this state law only goes, and this is the copy I have, Freedom of Information Act.
Okay.
Okay, so it didn't go that far, I had to go further to get it. I know, I'm not finished yet, I could see the way. So I wanted to make sure that I was in the right place for it, for the Open Meetings Act, okay. But it does, we have to go a little further with the 268, 48. Maybe because when it's saying or you have to, and so what you're saying is what we're giving for our 268H, which is another piece, has to do with the motion to sign, H, 8H, of the Open Meetings Act, and the, and statutory basis, so the basis is the attorney.
The legal opinion that is not public.
No, that's what I understand, okay. Now.
I'd like to make the motion to move into closed session to discuss a confidential written legal opinion regarding the appeal of Mr. Gallagher's five, center 2021, for your request.
Excuse me. Teresa, do you still have a question? Raise your hand for a few minutes, sir.
I was going to make the motion.
She's sitting closer to me.
Mr. Felix Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmerikey?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Wiswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to move, that's what I need to do, is to move that we're going to go in closed session, so if you want to sit and wait for us, hey, I see. There you go. Then we will be back. Congratulations, Terry.
We just think we haven't repelled any roads.
Yeah, the person said right now.
Thomas is up there. With them all located, building, but it's still very winter, so it won't do much more. We've got this one and the one in Ipseland.
Did you watch those, because they did that all with road graders?
Handels on the boards.
It's amazing to watch those.
So, but, yeah, probably another six pieces of land.
Now those guys were skilled.
They're country, they're all in Michigan.
I've never seen anybody use a grader like they did. They did those ditches, the graders.
So.
It was, it was amazing to watch. So they have the ability.
Got to get more Wisconsin.
They get high ditches somewhere after you're a little bit longer.
They'll get comments, and then they, that's a favorite, how this is really.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're careful, you had trucks, slide off, how they did it, you went here for a break, and they piled up.
Yeah.
If you're going to do anything to some of these roads, I mean, you should build a road, right? Not just post an asphalt on the gravel.
That's why it costs so much to do.
Yeah. Look how long it lasts.
Right.
You're going to do it on a road, right? I mean, that is still a great road. And that, like you said, one, twenty-five years of beats. That road was in great shape. It is a good example. Yes, it is, they did a really nice job. And they're capable of doing that. I haven't gone deep up in a while. Maybe over about a week ago. And that piece of center from cover to.
Well, is that stuff growing up in the road there?
Oh, yeah.
You see that, the base of it?
Yep.
The basements?
You see all the potholes and shuffles in that road?
That's because it's so flat, too.
It has a flat road. Yep, and then the base, you see, goes across a lot of wetlands. I bet if you were to dig down, you'd still find bogs in there. I'll bet you would.
Think they'll be in there long?
The laws?
Well, I think they'll be in there very long. Think they'll be in there very long, Terry?
No.
They're going to go out, get ping pong for a minute.
There's holes, maybe.
I get three.
Three holes, yeah. So who's property owners in, by Cherry Street, any of you guys here?
Five.
Property owners by Cherry Street?
No.
No?
There were three of them here last, uh, 20th.
I don't even know where Cherry Street is.
It's off Main.
I'm not so.
I'm at the Nevers-ish, not to that property, but to Cherry.
Did you see them all walking the other day?
No, I was probably here.
Pardon?
Probably here.
Yeah.
If I looked at my camera, maybe. If I looked at my camera at home, maybe. Should be walking around.
That was not me showing the room.
I'm going to go back and look now. Do you have your dog with you?
You recognize the dog. It was a nice day that day, though, for being out.
I wish I had been able to go to that meeting, because my girls walk to the middle school every day, and they've probably been hit a couple times, and no one lets them cross over to get to the school, so they've been late a couple times, so they leave.
So how did they go? Did they go down Cherry?
No, so they, so we live right across from the Methodist Church.
Okay.
Um, in the old Snyder House.
So do they go across the.
The park.
Pavilion?
Mm-hmm.
Which the sidewalk doesn't go all the way across, because, I mean, it's hobbled ground, I assume that's why it don't go all the way across.
Well.
Do they, do they go to the north side of church then, where that path is?
They walk between the two.
Yeah.
But even if they're at the crossroad, people won't cross. And they just keep doing life, don't pay attention to visual crossing guards, the elementary goes in later.
So isn't there, is there the cross lines with the lines across there?
Where's the police?
Because actually, I think pedestrians have right-of-way when that is there.
Yes.
So like if you go to Home Depot or Menards, and you go through there, and you see them make sections that are lined out, there's people in there, they have the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Legally.
I think they need lights and all those things.
No, they just need to start giving a few tickets.
Like today, I drove to the school because it was raining, and.
And you're to fly away?
Yeah, and I'm, holy smoke, I just couldn't believe how fast people were going to be there.
Well, I can. Yeah, because we don't get tickets for doing it. It costs them a couple hundred dollars every time, and they got points on their license. They catch on in a hurry. Pretty scary, huh? I don't ever hear that.
Well, like, they're, they're eighth graders, so like, we know, like, you know, it's harder than the people driving them, but other kids probably don't. So it's getting to be one of those, I'll be driving them, so they're not hiking it through snow, you know, it's not filled both ways. That's what they tell me.
They like the magic glasses up there?
They do, yeah. Online schooling, not for my kids. It wasn't for me either. It wasn't for me either.
Well, some people do it real well.
No, they don't.
No, my girls did not.
They don't. Some people do real well, but others, not so good.
And it's tough, there's, they have communication too.
Right.
My senior last year, my brother last year, he had 4.0. I was, I was like, oh, this is what the tech is doing online, he did great, my girls.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the case, though, you're right.
And this year, it's not all on the computer, they do have like paper assignments, so I'm excited about that, because it was screen time.
Oh, yeah.
For sixteen hours a day, it was terrible.
Yeah.
And they still gave them homework, but they would get home.
Wow. Well, it sounds like at least you had internet, though.
Yeah, I remember that a matrix pretty decent. During the beginning of the school year, it was not.
Oh, really?
Last year.
Yeah.
It was not great. Their first day, they kept getting kicked off, and they're like, we don't know what we're doing, they're like, out of here.
Is that right up the front of the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, did they without saying the name?
Right up there.
Yeah, it was weird, it was pretty rough for a while, and then.
All of a sudden, it kind of just.
Set it sound better, yeah?
A lot of people gone back in person to work and.
What do you think of the users, like, like you know, where?
So my husband would check the usage.
Yes.
And it was terrible, there were.
Like everybody was on.
And it was numerous devices. Like, we have one of those circles, there's some circle things, and he would go in and like turn off everybody's phones and everybody's TVs and all their gaming systems so that they didn't have the option to like suck the internet from there.
Because if you tried to stream or do anything, it was just, it was loud up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't like that. They don't like that, but it made them, like, a couple of school students.
You guys spoke down in office some stats, kind of, and stuff.
No, we're in election mode now.
Oh.
Yeah, they got that election.
The library mall.
The library.
Yeah. So, and then Superbills will do soon, November thirteenth, so.
No, really?
It's never anything, but it keeps us busy. Makes it easier, I guess.
It's not boring, that's for sure.
No, you get to see characters that be coming along. Or their names.
Don't let it tell you.
No, he, he's good company.
Did a nice job on, on the, uh, cap, playing, uh, Taylor.
Thanks.
It's, uh, really hard to sit down when she started reading it. I did. I've had, I've, I've let a couple other people read it, you know, in the community, and then, um, just to see, I mean, they're pretty bright people. And, um, Lauren said, I'll read it, and I said, you read that whole thing? And I just, you know, seen her a couple hours, and she goes, yeah, I started reading it and just kept reading it.
Well, I was going, I'm glad I closed her.
That's, that's, yeah, for sure.
Reads a lot better than the old one, like, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Lots better.
It'd be nice when you get your new information from twenty, twenty census.
Yes, hopefully you get that soon.
I'm gonna work on that soon as it's ready.
Are they gonna do a hard copy? Does, uh, Carter Hard Cap please have a offer?
Yeah, we will.
Well, you have to send them off the adjacent communities when it's finalized.
That's gonna be a couple hours, but.
I would think you could print that in-house, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
I mean, it's still an expense, but it's not like sending it out to a printer.
Yeah, I mean, depending on how many you have, it might send them out so that, you know, they don't have to be over here, and they can actually really nice and send them off, but.
Well, you wouldn't have to print them all at once. You could print them, uh, put them out there with something else.
Yeah.
Print ten copies or whatever.
Is it, is it smaller than the original document, do you remember?
It's fewer pages.
Um, I think it is fewer pages.
So it's a lot bigger.
No, it's smaller, better. People are more apt to read it.
I think we're kind of at the, the, like, higher point of where you want it to be. It can be much longer than fifty pages.
People won't read it if it's too long.
It's nice, and that's just paid out less?
Yes, much better than it was.
Paid out less?
Yeah.
So how do you set up the interactive parts, where you run from?
Oh, so I'll do that, um, most of it on the website.
Do you do that yourself? Well, I just.
I just have the, I just have the one bit.
Oh, yeah, that's really cool.
I was making the entire interview.
From process.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a lot easier on my, do it.
Have to do hard time checking.
Yeah.
You know, it's, yeah, it's trying to. Some stuff logged in, and it's like, uh, this is taking forever. That is pretty challenging. Question, are we through something new during that? Oh, all the time, all the time. All the time. Oh, I didn't get all the questions back, and I had to pick something new, remember?
Yeah, fuck also. No. Um, so, so, then, oh, no, 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 no.
It's like, yeah, but, uh, definitely not. You should fill a contact on flash. Oh. Oh, okay, yeah. Although if I have internet, I usually just download packages and I can read it.
Right.
When I don't have it, I still have.
Yep.
Store it on my.
Close up a lot faster, I think.
I think it's, yes, I, I really, very, uh, pre-george. I wish that Joe had an idea of putting, you know, little workstations in each. I guess there's spot, might be a good idea. And we would have the hall here.
That was a piece of chicken.
Law in the neighborhood, you're trying to find it on. But I'm lost, like, to the fruition or not. We'll see.
Okay, make my own stuff.
Yeah. Uh, I said, I should put down a flash back, so it's already on my desk. Uh, there are advantages, but.
What you got in the weight board here?
Uh, some plans, needs we need them. What are you talking about?
What's the board?
It's not Taco Bell.
Oh, okay. Yeah, nice. Where is the Taco Bell going to be?
In the, um, disconnecting the Meyer Park lot.
In the, oh, in the parking lot?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It's an outlaw.
Well, yeah.
Is that where the Admiral station is?
Between the Admiral and getting the gas station. Yeah. Right next to Mother's Gas Station.
Okay.
And, uh. Yeah, probably have a little hole. Yeah. Primarily drive up, go away, just not, not yet.
I mean, yeah.
Part of COVID is about seventy thirty, but, you know, half, half COVID is probably ninety ten, so.
How do they work, uh, as long as, if you, you know, if you're obviously, you so. Seems you roll out, like, so many, how do you do your equipment to your one supplier, like, like your restaurant equipment?
That's what I'm, people are right now trying to get versed around, it's not here, but, um, yeah, so you own the franchise or, as a consolidator, we buy most of the, most of the, you know, food cooking from, and then we, as franchisees, we can buy rooftop units and, and, you know, other sink toilets and everything else.
Actually, no parks.
Yeah, we, well, we have the window, we get to the same consolidators, uh, but, you know, so, I mean, nobody calls it right now, I need plenty of good news. Probably say, like, I've done right down our food line for a canned store, or for forty-five days, we could, we could turn lights on, they'd sell tacos, but, you know, the food line, and the same with our one Chelsea, and the one that just, uh, Hillary Clinton standard for.
What's, what's the food?
Well, the midline, yeah, you know, well, they don't, they don't. So, yeah, it's, it's an absolute.
Is it because of those supply?
Uh, yeah, I think it's a little bit so, it's supply, and I also think it's, you know.
There was bean in the quarter, by the way.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's right.
No, I didn't need it.
Oh, did you? Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, um, but, uh, I think it's a little bit thirty percent supply, thirty percent of distance, you know, we just can't get people to, if it's sitting on someone's docks and, and, and marked on admission, especially if you need liftgate, liftgate trucks, right, nowhere to find, because almost driving's not worth the money. So we drive and, you know, the, uh, the big large semis, because they make more money, and it's, it's a disaster out there.
That's interesting. Kind of, do you know the man that's got a fridge you get?
They use also.
Windows?
Yeah.
No. And thank you, sir, maybe, does that?
Yeah, that's. Cooksir.
Cooksir, yeah, okay. Wow, you got your manufacturing?
I, I serve as some.
Oh, the owner.
I serve as some, uh, mechanical equipment, like, uh, any food, and, uh, any restaurant or, or general, or. Open house work on the gates and, and, and without stuff, too.
All right.
And so, I know, I know I like what I like at work, now, but that's not necessarily what's, uh, easier to buy and get in the store.
Yeah.
You know, I like the ready exit, or, or not cleaning and simple. First of all, ready exit, I think, it's called ready exit, they have some manual windows that, uh, they're called Moyers. They manually open by hand, and then electronically release only in front of a beam, so they have the manual ones, just like Cooksir does. Um, and they have the automated ones, like Cooksir does, actually, I went for parts for, you know, bread and butter, but, um, the Moyer manual open electronic release, you step in front of the gate, you open a window, you're in front of the beam, it engages a bank, uh, probably trash. And then when you step out, a certain amount of time, thirty, fifteen seconds, whatever you set, then that man, that bank releases, and then the road pulls, and that design itself.
Yeah, we mostly, I don't, I, I can't take you many restaurants that we have, where we have any automated windows.
They're all manual, open, manual, close? Or at a ponder that you lean up against the corners and.
Yeah, so, I don't know, but very few, usually, all the doors are finished off or open, and then, uh, and.
You serve.
Serve, and your arms kind of like drop, like, just slowly closes, you know, and that's where you dig down sometimes, you need a help specialist, to make sure that windows, you know, close on that.
Oh, yeah. You think about how much some things are used.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Any of that stuff. Yeah, that's crazy. Pretty awesome, like, guys throw stuff together, though. Very cool, I think.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, it's, I, I call it organized chaos, and that's why smarter people like this guy are sitting here, keeping.
Putting it all together. Now, that isn't make the stuff, sometimes I have to go into it.
Oh, yeah, for sure, that's right.
Have to take some classes, we go in and start the, not like the grill, we did, you know, like, clamshell grill, they had McDonald's, we have people that have built them, from the ground up. And it's pretty interesting how it's, you know, say things, so, like, if you really had come in here and serviced this, you'd be obligated to like that.
Right. Well, uh, I have, fortunately, maintenance got the report up to the week, and, uh, took it all down to Florida two, three years ago, and had, uh, Manitowoc come down, and. Delphi, a bunch of people, and Dry Masters, that was interesting, but Manitowoc offers a three, um, class, you know, you know, including the council.
Right, for, like, builders?
For, for the, the ice makers.
Yeah.
And they have all these ice machines set up, that they can basically, they're simulators.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, they can make this go line out, and then that's a troubleshoot, and.
That's excellent.
And then, but, we just haven't got around to it with the COVID, so we're hoping next year we'll get sort of an extension.
That is a great idea, like, that's, especially if you can contain.
That's free, free loss. And, okay, that's free.
You have to take a lot of classes.
Yeah.
Dry Masters, Delphi, and, um, you can go to Manitowoc once.
Oh, yeah.
It's very important, so.
Yeah.
It's funny, as when you take the class, and see the stuff that comes out.
Well, it's always, and then you realize, well, you don't see it on the market in two years, so you're still calling that a sport.
I love it, though. Trying to, trying to get out of that part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I wish you guys success there.
Well, thank you. We've opened one very similar to this in Crasher, and that a lot, and it's just killing it, so, and you know, you gotta catch volumes coming in, to the matter, and. Well, yeah, they're working out very well, so, and, doesn't, and a good thing is, you know, you got this big parking lot, and, you know, brick and mors are kind of going away, so you're not really increasing traffic count, because people, you know, like, you're driving, trapped in two meters, so they're kind of, they're racing the application, you know?
How's the, um, how's the in and out of it gonna be? Oh, you're gonna tell us?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I couldn't describe it any better. You might be.
That's okay, I can, I can wait. That area right there. Coming out of my, they find, people got killed there. They, um, they finally put a green arrow to come in from, um, if you're coming, going east, they kind of finally put a green arrow in there. I called the state of Michigan two or three times. I was there when it first got killed. You know, and it was banned right from the start. The, the way they had that set up, it was bad right from the start.
Well, that's, that's him, Doug.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's improved since they put that light.
You made it, yeah, at least.
Hmm?
You made it all, huh?
I designed it, yeah.
He does that, so. Nice job.
Thanks. Yeah?
Maybe you did the redesign after.
I did.
But what is that like?
The hardest part is trying to do it all.
And layer offs, obviously.
It's not the only one you do.
No, right now, I'm designing, uh, it's like two hundred thousand square foot manufacturing facility.
That's good.
Yeah.
The lighting and everything?
We do that all now, I don't do it personally, but we have architects, um, designers, engineers, uh, safety, that's pretty much. Everything we've grown up to do, so.
So is this what, uh, what, uh, permission do you say?
No, no, we don't.
I have a board there.
Oh, yeah. That's why they're, that's why they're here.
Yeah, that's why they're here.
Yeah.
Not like that.
Sure, mine.
Yeah, what's your?
Yeah. Yeah, sure, go for it, yeah.
We're hoping it does, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Sometimes you don't know where you're going, it's a bad thing.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, never let anybody sit in there.
Right.
Get them through so fast, uh, I don't know what to learn about them.
Well, some people get the light, and then they change their mind for a very reason. Oh, seriously.
Yeah, yeah, they're decisive.
Especially if they got the smaller kids at the front or something.
Oh, yeah.
How are they an old guy?
I mean, uh.
I like diners. I don't like the drive-throughs, because I don't use the bank drives, it was, uh.
You're a person, white person.
Well, and, and you know, if you're, my late wife was deaf, and if you're deaf, those drives are, I don't know how you'd ever use successfully, I really don't.
Talk to you around sometimes.
Well, especially if you're deaf, and you rely on sign language and, and lip reading, it's.
Then it's impossible.
It's impossible, very.
Something nice about this area is you got so many communities that come, go, go through that area. You have communities from the south, you know, highly, communities from the east, lots coming through.
Have you noticed the traffic in the morning, have these found out yet?
No.
All on it. I don't know where the traffic comes, so it's terrible. And I can't get over, there's only one light and entrance and exit really that fires. I mean, you really can't, unless you want to go eastbound, you can't go out of that driveway that's on.
No, that, that's clear to the light, because I've seen, like, in my phone, it's to the.
So if you, if you want to go west, you've got to go out with the light.
Correct. If I'm on my bike and it's way back, I'll go, sure, I can do a Michigan.
Oh, that, let's do a J train, but. Yeah, or it's easy on your bike, but if you're driving a truck or something, it's not very long to pass it. Yeah, I'm, I'm just really anxious to get these self-driving cars, the computer cars.
I just hope one of them.
It's gonna stop people from, uh, the red lights, it's gonna stop the speeders, the people who drive in the speedway.
I agree. I agree.
They'll, they'll be stopping at the stop sign, it's not going through all.
I get tripped all over, and I, I think Michigan's the worst red light runner state.
Oh, it's terrible.
Awful.
It's terrible.
I mean, I don't know, it's like, I make sure that everybody's.
Plus, now, everybody's on their phone at the corner, so they're, so they're, you're waiting for somebody, you're waiting for somebody to realize that the light's green now.
It's just a little age, maybe, it's a little.
No, you're wrong about that, you're way wrong about that. But I I have to admit that, that Marsh Road area, Marsh and um.
Saginaw?
Yeah, Saginaw, that turned out way better than I expected.
Oh, I still think it's horrible.
I don't, I think it's way better, I think the traffic moves.
That's a little better than it was, but I don't know why we don't put people turn a left out of that speedway, MSU, FCU drive. I don't think they should be able to go south.
Oh, yeah, I kind of agree with that, because it's.
It's a mess.
They think the planners would have done something wrong then.
I tried to get them to hear something about that, tell them deaf ears.
State designers, they're not as good as.
No, no, when they're. They should have made the entrance into the uh, into the MSU, FCU wider, if they would have made that wider, it would have been easier for people to go in and out of there.
Well.
It's not wide enough.
What I thought they should do was put a road that, they used to call it an alley, along the one.
Access road?
Yeah, access road along the back of MSU, FCU, back of the McDonald's and into the speedway area. So you could walk to the top of the hill.
That's not, that's a, that's a good idea, really.
Go in that road that went into whatever that subdivision thing is, then go down the the access road and go to MSU and go to McDonald's and not go into those places from first road at all.
Can that be, can that be done across the road?
Uh, you're talking where Monticello's is?
From Monticello's to, because you know they're gonna build south of Monticello's and they're building probably.
Well, what are you gonna build, south of Monticello's, oh, south, yes, they're.
And it's just.
Yes, and our intention is to have an access road that goes from the oil chain through the Monticello's. In the front of those, man, with that, in the front, yes, and move the Monticello driveway so it lines up with that MSU, no, so it lines up with that subdivision.
Oh, that's a good idea, too.
Oh, yeah, it's higher on the belt there. Well.
I don't go, I don't go south of it very much, so.
Out of Monticello's?
No, out of the, out of the credit union.
Oh, I never go south of it, no way.
So what do you do, go down the speedway, do the access?
Yeah.
Access road in front and then.
If, if I want to go south of Marsh?
Yes.
I go out of MSU and I go up to that driveway that goes into the subdivision and I turn up at the top hill and south.
That's better, but it's not that much better, really.
Say that again?
He goes out of the driveway where the subdivision is instead of coming out of where the McDonald's is.
I think, to me, that's better, but that's personal, I've got better visibility because I'm on the crown of the hill.
You do get a break, though.
Sometimes, yes.
Yeah, but you gotta, you gotta be patient.
The other times, a lot of those people, on Marsh Road, driving fifty-five to sixty miles an hour.
Yeah, that's true.
Forty-two.
The old drum on magazine for us?
I I gave up the one. I had Birds in Blooms and Martha Stewart.
I'm gonna watch what I say, I'll be stopped.
It's okay.
I thought that was gonna be real quick.
Here's my, here's my suggestion for this group, make the public comment at the beginning, so we can say our two cents and get the hell out of here.
And then you say the uh, the back of the conversation, see, and two.
Yeah, like, why couldn't they do that at the end, pride of conversation thing?
That's do move stuff up for community through folks like you, yeah.
You come, do you guys come to every meeting?
No.
Oh.
I've been to the last one, this one.
I don't ever.
I've only been to, I've only been to one other one and that was over the, over the Marsh Road and I came and said, this seems like it's gonna be a mess and it turned out to be nuts and I say.
That was a long meeting.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I've discovered that.
All they said, all they said was, we can't do anything about it, it's M dot, that's basically what I thought.
See, M dot stops at the speedway driveway where they, where they stop the curb there and then they redo the, that's the hedge of the M dot right away. So they don't have any more right of way going south, so as far as they're concerned, that's the end of their.
They're done?
Granders for engineer. Yeah, so they're done.
So you're here at the meeting, everybody that's here is show cops.
And that, and where he put the, like, made the demonstration?
There are seven meetings.
Now, I just came to the, I just came to one of them and I made a public comment that I thought it just looked like, that looked like a fiasco, the way it was designed, and that's all, and then I went.
Okay, I'm sure you weren't doing all that stuff.
But, but what they said was, they have no control over it, it's M dot, they have.
That's true.
Right, but they, M dot, they've been talking about that since, I looked at my records, sixty-four, two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, I'm sure, I mean, that's.
They talked about it a lot, I don't know if they're going to do that.
Yeah, see, now, I have that.
Oh, no, I gotta separate these people.
I, I don't think that was a suitable place for a.
Okay. The excuse they gave for why they were changing it was because pedestrians and bikes, that's what they said, that's what initiated the whole thing, pedestrians and bikes. Okay, in the, in the year or so since that thing has been done, I have seen two people walking there and I was like shocked. They were actually crossing the intersection.
Yeah, they don't usually, like, the people, I have seen people there, but a lot of times they'll go to towards the mire, towards down the.
To cross, to cross.
Use the street, yeah, walk across there.
And there's no sidewalk there, well, there is on the mire side, but not on the other side.
Only down by mire.
Down by mire, yeah, the sidewalk does.
Close to those way.
Oh, I think.
Probably the past days to the street.
Yeah, okay, but there's no sidewalk there.
No.
See, that's harshly, they're trying to sell.
Yeah, they're trying to scuff up and say, hey, you know, we're excited to build a ton of the fucking air and we're gonna.
Well, I think by the time you do the setbacks, Saginaw, you'll send back on Marsh Road. I must. Well, you gotta have the setbacks before you, and for the right of way.
How many feet is?
The setbacks?
Eighteen?
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's fifty from the right, edge of the right. To the building, the lot, to the building lot. Because I ran into this, uh, we had a block party down in Monticello, a couple months ago and I said, he was looking at a lot and he said he went to the township and he said.
Yeah, wired?
No, no, this was it, so I'm, is that a building of a lot? And they said, yes, and I said, yeah, it's a building of a lot, if you want to build a house, it's seventy-one, and he said, what do you mean? I said, well, there's the pipeline right of way, goes right through that lot and on one side of the pipeline right of way, you can build it, seven hundred wide, build it on the other side, you can build it. I'll wind the house up, you like the home?
How tall?
Uh, you're limited, but. Feet of the rope. And they found the width of the house from overhand to overhand, kind of all started on the side.
You're real?
I don't know the answer to that, you're retarded. Well, either, you know, yeah, take the air. You're, or um.
Bird, bird.
Yes. You should know. Good house, Ken.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. You gotta make enough, you know, take in the next session, right?
Mm-hmm. Do I call you back? We are back. For the session. I motion to end this session, it means we're right for regular session. Second. Mr. Elmer Eji?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler Diaz, Mr. Ostrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
All right, now, would it be, isn't it, I think we've missed anything, your items for action, the Freedom of Information Act appeal request? So we need to have them.
I would like to motion to provide a notice of extension, re-redact email addresses and produce additional records in Bath Township's possession.
Second.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Howell?
Yes, as understood.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes, Mr. Ostrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer Eji?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're at business fourteen, which deals with items of introduction and discussion and update on the extra load inside.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, I appreciate it, um, since our last meeting, you were expecting a presentation tonight on the Webster Road Committee, uh, project scope and plans, and that will not occur tonight, as I indicated in my memo. We recently submitted a new funding request for the sidewalk design, um, with the township providing a fifty thousand dollar match, which is twenty percent of, an amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because that's what we believed it would take to put in, um, an adequate sidewalk, um, excuse me, adequate sidewalk infrastructure from Drumheller to, um, um, the north on offering of sixty-nine. We were notified by Tri-County Regional Planning Commission that it was not likely that we received the additional transportation alternatives program, we refer to that often as cap grant money. What we did, what we do know at this time is that the original amount that we requested, which is one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, which includes our twenty percent local match of twenty-three thousand dollars. Will still remain on the books and is in process to be implemented during twenty twenty-three, when we are also doing the Webster Road Mill and Phil project with the Clinton County Road Commission. So at present, um, we have, I say we, the Webster Road Committee had provided, um, some options to this board for consideration. And we are gonna hold on those plans until the Webster Road group can take a look better at those plans and ensure, not just because of cost reasons, but to assure that we've received some additional feedback from residents. And we're trying to make sure that we, um, accommodate bike traffic if there is such bike traffic, um, that can be substantiated, um, we do not have those numbers at that, at this time. We also want to make sure that we are, um, looking carefully at the center turn lane issue, both south of Drumheller and north of Drumheller. Still to be looked at is the pedestrian, um, issues of lighting, benches, um, I won't say sidewalk, um, other amenities that help pedestrians travel safer, um, which may be in conjunction with, um, safe routes to school. Because we, we cross paths, um, north of Drumheller Road, Dr. Clark Road. So, um, tonight, um, you do not have that, uh, presentation, obviously, um, but you still will be asked for a future determination, um, of the following. And I'm gonna cover these, you will receive a presentation before you're asked to make decisions on the following items. So Drumheller North to Clark, after discussion, and this is by Mark Trotter, our engineer with Clinton County Road Commission. Um, he spoke with their Inham County engineer, he recommends that Bath Township consider a three-foot, excuse me, three ten-foot traffic lanes. And three-foot paved shoulders for bike to bike traffic, so there would be no elimination of the center turn lane from Drumheller North to Clark. He believes that narrowing the traffic lanes to ten feet would assist, would assist with traffic calming, which is slowing of the traffic, keeps the center turn lane intact and provides adequate space for bike riders. Three feet paved plus one and a half foot of gutter, and although that can't be, um, technically dedicated a bike lane, because it's not wide enough. Um, it has been successful in other areas for controlling and keeping bike traffic safe from, um, motor vehicles. For Drumheller South to I sixty-nine, um, Mark Trotter is recommending converting the south section, Drumheller to I sixty-nine, and adding a left turn lane. Increasing the road in this section from two lanes to three, widening the road to include two four-foot bike lanes. But that would come at a cost to the township, so that you understand that, any cost to widen the road would come to the township and would not be picked up by the Clinton County Road Commission. That cost is approximately seventy-six thousand dollars at this time. So the existing kind of real estate in that area, the width of the road, can accommodate two traffic lanes plus bike lanes. Or three traffic lanes with no bike lanes, but it cannot accommodate both at this time, so you'll be asked in the future to make a decision on that. Um, they have increased, the Clinton County Road Commission have increased its ask for the Mill and Phil amount, um, from three hundred thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand. For, um, the Mill and Phil of Webster Road, the additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars is intended for guard road replacement, which they think is important for safety. Deteriorated curb replacement between Drumheller and Clark, which is something that was identified when we did our walking tour for St. Ross to School. And additional pavement thickness in the roadway of the Mill and Phil. So we are not expected to receive any kind of notification on funding until June of twenty twenty-two. And at that time, we would need to conduct a land survey, which last time I provided you an update, it, I think it had the amount of thirty thousand dollars, but. It would be approximately fifteen to thirty thousand dollars dependent on the options that you also liked. Drumheller South to I sixty-nine, um, public input, which can include a, a survey or public meetings, and then having the project engineered, which was high at one time, but I have approximately fifty to twenty thousand. So we're trying to firm up costs and options, but we haven't even noticed that we are not going to receive the additional monies that we thought we could apply for. Any questions?
Is, is cap funds, so, I mean, it sounds like you have, uh, uh, we're good for the hundred and fourteen thousand.
Correct.
Is, is that dependent upon the amount of sidewalk that is added or replaced, or is it just a group of funds that we can use for sidewalks, lighting, benches and the like?
It's for the sidewalks, um, essentially.
Okay. Uh, another question I have is, I, if we reduce the, the, uh, the width of the road for that first from, to ten feet, are we also going to reduce the speed limits to accommodate, uh, the traffic calming? I, I took a look at the, the literature on this and there's actually not a lot of consensus about the effectiveness of, uh, lane width and, uh, um, its impacts. Primarily it's safety and all depends if you're proven, one of the things that's, I, I, there was one article that I read that I was, if there's a lot of heavy traffic, um, with heavy vehicles like semi trucks or earthmoving trucks, um. I, I, you know, it's actually less safe to have ten-foot, uh, length, so I, I want to make sure that we accommodate that. And then, obviously, I've sent in to mine state because of the safe routes to school, but I, I took a look at a non-motorized plan, which I, I think is thoroughly outdated.
It is, I think, twenty thousand seven.
Uh, but, you know, the, one of the concerns I have is, is that's, um, it's not quite clear if the non-motorized plan or the current draft of the master plan, uh, uh, were reviewed and consulted as a part of this process, maybe it, it has been. Um, I don't know what kind of data has been collected, I know there was a, a, a side or load audit conducted by the committee, but I don't know if we've, if that committee's had a public hearing.
They have not.
And so the way that it's structured is that's, it, it sounds like we want to have a plan first before we engage the community on what, what they'd like to see, and that seems backwards to me.
It does, it does go backwards.
And so I, I know that Brian Shorty, uh, helped him with this, as part of the planning commission, did do, uh, some community outreach activities, we had, like, uh, Mr. Wright was there at one of the bath days where we had a booth. Uh, and then Brian and I, uh, did here at this township office, a community forum. And we had tremendous community inputs on what we would like to see, um, so I just, I just worry that, uh, the committee is making decisions without good community feedback on what we'd like to see. I'd rather make decisions about what we want based on community feedback and our plan process and our comprehensive plan, rather than based on dollar bonds from the beginning.
Sure.
I feel like we should chase our dream nuts.
I agree.
So that's been my concern, and vocal about my concerns with the direction I've seen the Webster Road Committee go. That's not to discount all the tremendous, I, I, to lose my colleague's term, horsepower that we have. I mean, we have phenomenal people.
We do.
I just, I want to make sure that's, you know, we're, if I remember correctly, in the discussion in the planning commission, we, we want to seize the opportunity that holds us and set the stage for the next twenty years of what we can do there.
So I think that is difficult, and I'm not trying to cut you off, so this can be back and forth, I appreciate that. It's difficult because you're expected to approximate the cost of your projects in order to apply for funding. And then, once you're granted funding, you're expected to engineer, take public input, and those things have to happen in a certain set of time. So one thing that'll address is your, is your input, your public input. We can take in public, public input right now, and we will have to do as part of that process. We will be required to do a public input session again. So if that doesn't bother anybody, we're on certainly open, and I think the Webster Road Committee would be open to that, too. It feels backwards because it, it is backwards. And like I said, you're expected to choose an option so that you can kind of estimate and engineer it, so that you could ask her to appropriate a lot of money. Like, we thought one hundred and fourteen thousand would be adequate for this project. When we started looking, it was more like two hundred and fifty thousand. So in order to get to that amount, you have to do an additional ask, so that you get enough, and then the onus doesn't fall on the township's funds in order to pay for that. So the process from the state sets it up to be for choosing dollars, and I know we don't want to chase dollars. We should be chasing safety, a community that people are able to get where they need to go, whether that be on foot or by vehicle or car. And so I think we can deal with some of the barriers this process is providing by doing an additional public input session or doing an additional public meeting or a survey, as long as we're not stepping up other projects that we're working on right now, too, and try to accommodate those things. But it's, it's hard because it's really that chicken or the egg. I, I think.
And we've known about the Webster Project for a few years now, and the planning commission has been pushing for the discussion about this. If we had a, a good non-motorized plan, that would have provided the blueprint. If we had an updated master plan, which should have been updated in two thousand and nineteen, that would also have been helpful. The Safe Route to Schools project is exactly the same in terms of there's a set dollar month for infrastructure. The difference is that how we set up the committee is that it's very inclusive with activities from the very beginning.
Right.
The Webster Road, how many meetings has the Webster Road Committee had?
Five, I think it's five.
So, I mean, this, this board authorized the forming of the Webster Road Committee a year ago. And, and so I, I just, I do worry that we had the opportunity to seek community feedback from the very beginning, even more than a year ago, when this was brought to the planning commission. You know, it's just unfortunate that we're in a, you know, crunch time where we have due dates, where now we have to make decisions that just don't feel right, at least mainly. And maybe it's minority.
I still think, I think because the additional money is not available, I think it has slowed, it has slowed the decision-making down a little bit, means it's stopped it completely, but it's slowed it a bit, so that there can be time for that, because what we were looking at previously was having to apply for something before tonight.
So the other thing is I was taking a look at the, the board's policy on fund balance. And one of the things that I thought was kind of interesting is that when we exceed fifty percent fund balance, I, I, the policy says that we need to be investing those additional funds. And so I, I wondered to attempt that, I, you know, if we have the plan that we have buy-in on and the community is, is happy with, you know, maybe it's a good idea to invest in our fund balance or maybe some ARCA funds to that project. And so, again, these are all where, you know, I, what I'm thinking about is all of this.
I recognize there are some disconnects. We do have some, some talented horsepower on that committee. We've, we've got some engineers, we've got members of the road committee, we've got members of the planning commission, but I do feel like there is a disconnect. Is it possible that this board would like to have a meeting with that group, or? I, I, what I, what I don't want is for them to continue to work in the direction that they're working, if, if this group in entirety is unhappy with what's coming out of them or that group. And you haven't said that, you're just saying, you're saying that it could be different, it could be, you know. So can this group meet with that group to sort some of this out?
I think that would be incredibly helpful to know why we're doing the development. We keep talking about this Webster Road port over development, but I'm not hearing the real reason why we're doing it, why we're investing that kind of money when we have SCUMA coming up with a tremendous amount of money. So, okay, guys, you got a darn wrestle.
Yes. So there's, there's the difference, which is we need to take a look at our home and sidewalks and our infrastructure. So that's, that's big. We, we should have done that a long time ago. And we've very crystal clear community feedback in that regard. The more, I think, formidable reason why we're doing it now for Webster is because we're scheduled for a mill and fill and the opportunity to receive TAMP grant.
It's tiny.
So it's tiny based on, you know, the scheduling of Clinton County Road Commission and where we fell and.
And money available.
And TAMP grant money available.
So it doesn't have anything to do with bikes or anything to do with cars or traffic? It has everything to do with.
Thirty-foot perspective, if we had a, a well-designed, non-motorized plan and a comprehensive plan that's, that, you know, we were all bought into and comfortable with, there'd be a pretty clear direction that we should be spending our money and making investments in our community that.
In our community.
Related to community feedback input.
Is it my turn now?
Your turn now.
This is a very, very timely conversation, because we are about to enter into our budget discussions.
Yes.
On how we're going to spend or invest, if you will, some of our funds. So that should be a big part of our upcoming discussions that start this week. So, you know, thanks for leading us into it, Jason, because we are going to be talking about infrastructure very, very soon.
Okay. Will you raise your hand?
No, I'll wait till you get to the end here when you talk about the capital improvement plan, because that's all going to be part of that.
Okay.
And this, why does it go with the sewer as well with the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar thing, because how much is of the four hundred and fifty thousand, or they take into anticipation for, for repairs of the sewer or whatever needs to be done on the middle of the road?
It's, what will happen is, I've been in touch with SCUMA on coordinating that, and they televised under, under Webster Road from, in the project area, because the last thing we need is, of course, a collapse, because there's heavy equipment coming through there. What we will look at doing is lining, relining Webster Road, but that will be a separate cost to us that will need to occur before the 2023 mill and fill.
And all, all these things that you're going to do, and what, and we're, I'm not going to jump to the, to the capital improvement plan, but I am going to say this, the planning commission does a wonderful job of putting together the C I P plan and everything. You know, I think the planning commission does do a wonderful job, because they don't realize how many different funds they're going to draw from here, how many different funds. You talk about fund balances, how many different fund balances there is. I mean, you no longer have, you know, if you look at the police department, it's no longer, not a general fund, it's a public safety fund, they have a fund balance of their own that we work with. We have, we have the, the, the general fund fund balance was what we all like to talk about all the time, but you also have the sewer fund fund balance, or the sewer fund, which, which you're going to have some sort of fund balance there. And God help me from saying this, because we just got through going to court, but, and we're not going to do anything with it until after, I'm guessing, March. It's all the money's still in the same account, and what my understanding, you're talking to the auditors and the authorities and everything else, I can leave it there as long as I want, I'm the treasurer. But you have the DDA fund, which has a significant balance.
Right.
Even after you take and pay off L C C and return your funds to them, it's going to have a significant balance. And that money is by, by resolution restricted to the downtown development district, because we did not do anything with the downtown development district, mind if you slept with the same, that takes in Cousins Park, that takes in this corridor out here, and that's got a lot of money. You've got more than one money place for this stuff to come from. So I, I think, and that was kind of later, I don't want to get too involved with this, but this Drumheller Road thing, you guys look at that number, and I think, yeah, okay, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I don't know how much that, I, I've heard so many different numbers, I'm not really sure what we're going to pay yet until we get down to the end.
I think until it's engineered, we won't count.
But it's, 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 it needs to be for the right reasons, just what Jason said, it needs to be so it's public safety and whatnot. The only thing I'm going to remind you of, though, is we don't own the road. The county owns it. Act fifty-one money owns the road, folks, and we don't see Act fifty-one money, the county does. So that's, that's who owns the road. So everything you do, we're doing for the benefit of the county as well, it's for the people who, the towns who drive them.
But we own the sidewalks.
You can.
And the streetlights.
And you decide to.
And whatever other things.
But you decide to.
You choose to do on behalf of our community.
Correct. You decide to, you can. You'll be responsible for them once you do it. That, that's the other thing, you know, there was, there was, there was an email at Somers today I read, you guys think I don't read my emails, but I do. There was an email saying, that at Somers today, they talked about sidewalks, I think it came from you, it was, it was a doubtless sidewalks and safe routes to schools, and the fact that we don't enforce our sidewalk ordinance because we don't, we never have, we always kind of, we did it by enforcement, by, by complaint only, and we're going to have to look at that.
I, I generated that one.
And it goes, it goes, it goes back to, to, we're getting bigger. It's a, it's a bigger place. Now we're doing more, we, we got, we got to get a little more modern, and we got to do things a little bit differently. We got to grow a little bit.
All adds to that is, we often on the board talk about, well, dollar amounts, recurring costs, and, you know, we're going to have to maintain that, but we spend almost no time talking about the safety of our citizens.
Yep.
And that perhaps safety costs money. We don't talk about sense of place, or we don't talk about, you know, people who are too comfortable walking in their own community, parents that are comfortable letting their kid cross the road to go to school. We don't talk about those things, and we need to start talking about those things. And when we talk about the budget and the financing, we need to have a clearer understanding of why we're doing this and for whom we're doing it. And that's where the comprehensive plan comes from, and that's supposed to be guiding our decision meeting. Capital Improvement Plan that we're going to talk about in a second is a tool of the comprehensive plan. And it's the structure by which we get feedback and guidance from our planning commission on where we should spend those funds. And every year, we, I'm, I'm, I'll get off my seat.
I wouldn't do, if I can. I, I heard a comment like the other day that there was a family that wouldn't let their child cross the street to go to either to middle school or elementary school, and they forgive me, I don't remember which one. And I was struck by that, they would rather drive their child and face the, the loop, is what I call it, than to let their child cross the street. And that really struck me as what you're talking about is the safety. And, and when you manage infrastructure and the day-to-day operations of things, you, you, you put your attention here because this is failing, or here because this is, you know, this needs attention, or this needs to be updated, which you're correct. In a day-to-day of what I do, I don't consider safety, and that isn't anything intentional other than I'm not generally dealing with the public telling me, this is broken and it's going to hurt somebody. But all those things can hurt someone. So I, I heard that a lot clearer, and it dawned on me the other night when we had that walking tutorial, that was something I really wanted to say, too. So I appreciate that opportunity.
Let's move on. You guys, great discussion, could not have asked for a better discussion. I don't know if you felt that way, but it was here. We're going to go to fourteen B, which is item fraction. That's the Taco Bell.
Taco Bell, I believe we have representatives of Taco Bell here. I, I don't know quite yet if we need anything from you yet. The planning commission had forwarded to you, I, I just was saying, like, I don't know if they're going to act, or I don't know if they'll have questions for you, so. So I just wasn't sure. The, the planning commission forwarded this to you, you had an opportunity last time to, to speak with Tim and have a conversation about Taco Bell. I will note that there were seven conditions that came with the approval of the site plan, and I will note that I believe all, but two of them have been met at this time. So they are really working hard to meet our conditions. The only two that I believe are not met, and I could be wrong, because it could be that they're ready, but I don't have the documents yet.
Well, that's smart, yeah.
Okay, good deal. Is the drain right-of-way agreement with Meyer and the pond maintenance agreement with Meyer? Everything else to this, to this time has been completed by them, and they've been looking in good faith to complete these items. So is there?
Well, we, we're totally, Meyer, Meyer's not that quick to react, so, I mean, they're busy just like everybody else is, so they, they have, they have, our attorneys have their attorney what we thought was agreeable to all parties, and you're not heard back from Meyer.
So you're working towards it, which is what we look to hear.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so we're not there yet, but they're working towards it.
All right, this is item fraction, so I guess we take a look.
Well, let me make a motion first. So I, I move, I move to accept the site plan with the seven conditions. Can I add a contingency here, upon a receipt of the two agreements listed under three and four, the drain right-of-way agreement and the pond maintenance agreement?
I'll second that.
Okay, hold on. Sorry. Mr. Westwester?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Chandler, yes. Mr. Roscrans?
Yeah.
Mr. Funesbliz?
Yes.
Mr. Elmer E. G.?
Yes.
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, yes, take care.
All right. We're still on fourteen B, B, which is the acceptance of the twenty-one, twenty-six capital improvement, C I P.
So the planning commission and Ryan, Mr. Trustee Doon's list is part of boarding this up to the board. This is for board acceptance, you are not approving it or denying it, you are only accepting it from the planning commission. We had a very good discussion at that level, when they approved this up to you, that they feel like this process needs to continue to be improved as well. They feel as though they lack communication and information as to what often is important to the board, and I think that that is something that you would say probably of their work as well. So I would recommend, as we move through the next few months and they embark on this process again, that we take time to meet with the planning commission and to get on one page when it comes to roles and strategies. They do have a master plan that they are forwarding to you, needs to, I believe, have just a public hearing, and then a meeting here for your consideration. So, but I, I think we can all benefit from some open dialogue between probably the two, one of the two most important groups in this, in this township, so.
Are you, are you recommending a joint meeting?
I am recommending.
Would I, thank you. All right, when is that supposed to take place, if you're looking?
Wait, wait, no, no, we don't need to do that right now, it's just something that.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm looking to see what they've done and what they're planning, so when you're talking about a joint meeting, you're talking about something So when you're talking about a joint meeting, you're talking about something that's going to give us the information to, because this is an idios fraction. So we've accepted.
Your, your action is to accept it.
Yeah. So that's what I'm saying, that if we have a joint meeting, what if we don't accept what they said? Even though we're accepting, does that make any sense? Okay.
I've never not seen a board accept the capital improvement program from the planning commission. It would be your, it would be your, your, you know, choice if you chose not to.
Sure.
Um, but this is a document they transmit to you and is for consideration during the budgeting process. If you chose to fund one of these projects, I did believe there are two included, you can choose to do that, but you do not have to do that.
So what you're saying that we're gonna vote on is whether we accept this particular plan that they have.
Correct.
That's, 'cause I was looking at it thinking, what if I disagree for that trustee of the commission?
There's two pieces that I, I feel are missing in the capital improvement plan. That would be helpful for us.
Thank you.
Inasmuch as this is a document that's booked and formed our decision-making, um, it would be helpful for me to have, uh, a bit more than a paragraph or a few sentences on the process. Specifically, I'd like to see what's the, uh, process, uh, rubric was. Um, and then I'd like to see the data. And so it could be aggregate data, but what the actual scores are, uh, total, uh, per the project. Vote for, 'cause I, I believe, uh, is it not correct that they, they score both nondiscretionary and discretionary projects?
Uh, no, they only.
They only score the discretionary projects?
That's correct.
So unless I missed where those scores, uh, we might have named it. But part of that is, I, I'd also like to see, I mean, we have, uh, uh, either, you know, some sort of, you know, uh, indicator for the variance there was in the scores. So if it was a lopsided, uh, uh, distribution, you had, uh, half the planning commission score high and half the planning commission score low, that's useful information that would be helpful. But at least having those scores, and especially, I mean, when there's two projects, you know, I would feel comfortable accepting this as is under the, you know, motion that's, uh, they assume feedback of.
Sure.
And additional data.
Yes.
But in the future, if there are more projects and it becomes a little bit more challenging for us to, uh, make a decision based on, you know, these are the things that were approved versus not approved.
Okay.
Oh, good, treasurer, Mr. Whistler.
No, I don't know, Ryan, but you wanna do this, you might not wanna say this, but maybe Karen will answer the question. But I think we oughta, um, clarify the difference between discretionary projects and nondiscretionary projects. I understand what you're talking about, but I'd like to hear it from the public here, what, what it is, or what the differences between the two, and, and, and how they get decided what's discretionary and what's non-discretionary. There must be some, obviously you have a part in this, so for that, because you write the budget. Um, so you, you have an idea of how that works. Well, Ryan, is there something, is there a lot of talk at the planning commission about that?
No, we were just given the two, um, or discretionary. Yes, I do.
Okay, what's the difference between the two?
I'll defer to the superintendent 'cause it does involve her in that process.
So, so the nondiscretionary are those items that I undertake as part of my budget, whether it be a vehicle replacement and infrastructure replacement. It, in the past has not been, um, rated because whether or not, however something is rated, if it needs to be done, I'm gonna undertake it. And this board would consider that as part of the budget process.
So the difference between the two would be?
Have to be done and need to be done, or want to be done.
So nondiscretionary is need, right? And discretionary is no? Okay. Go ahead.
So I can provide a little bit of background here. So over the past five, six years, the planning commission has struggled with the scoring of capital improvement projects. Because we've had projects that already had earmarked funds to different budgets. And then we had the improvement projects that typically were generated based on, uh, you know, folks from Park Lake, uh, or, uh, folks from Parks and Rec. And we had a single process for, uh, scoring, uh, on both groups. So we've, we have a scoring system that would score, uh, a, you know, the resurfacing of a parking lot that had earmarked funds. And then we would score, uh, a senior center, uh, improvement project using the same tool. So it, it, it became really difficult to do fair, use the same tool for those disparate, uh, set of proposals. So to fix that and in alignment with, uh, using a new tool, a new rubric for doing scoring, the planning commission parsed out the, uh, projects into what they called nondiscretionary projects, uh, projects that have already had the funding. No decision really needs to be made on that, other than we've looked at it.
So it's a need basis?
Versus discretionary, and we can play with words there, but generally community improvement, uh, uh, that would not. Yeah, that would, yeah. That we got a earmarked set of ones.
What that we'd like to have or want, want to have or would be nice to have, but we don't have, and we haven't identified funding for. Thank you.
Okay, no, no, so discretionary is no funding. And nondiscretionary is with a need, with funding, no funding.
Usually if it's a sewer improvement or, uh, replacement of a, uh, police vehicle, or it's been identified somewhere in the budget.
Is nondiscretionary.
Correct.
Okay. You guys, can you help?
I can.
Go ahead.
Everything is, everything is on here as a nondiscretionary project, as a capital asset, the township. And I prefer to engage, forgive me if I'm wrong, but seventy-three to seventy-four with the audit. The whole steer is, it can fluctuate one way or the other. Um, but that's, that's a, that's a capital asset. If you think about this and then you look at it, you know, um, our equipment is a capital asset. Our building grounds are capital assets. Our fire trucks are, police cars are, Public Works has equipment, same thing. Even Parks and Rec repair and stuff that we have in Parks and Rec are capital assets. The township is as valid as all of our sewer things. And here's the point I wanna make, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic, but here's the point I wanna make. We've always had C I P items. That's been discussed whether we do or we don't. And we always have the C I P item because we have capital assets that we, we maintain. These things that discretionary projects, they too are gonna be a capital asset at one point in time, with the exception of maybe the Cousins Park, because I believe we have some sort of a leasing unit with the, with the school on that. So not necessarily will that be.
Future.
In, in our audit, but it will be a capital expense, but it may not be a capital asset. That's my knowledge of that. The trail to the evil around Park Lake, I think I already, the supervisor was kind enough to show me your map the other day. I didn't realize I'm a slammer on around there. That's already a capital.
Which means I'm lawless, so.
But that's what that is. That's what the, the thing you're missing there, that, that piece of it's like your home, you know, your home's your capital asset. That's what, that's what, that's what, that's what.
So if you have roads, if you have, just so I understand, so if you have roads and then you haven't proven that.
Roads are gonna be, that's something, I knew you were gonna ask me something, I'm pretty wrong. Roads are gonna be an investment in capital asset, because the roads, it's just like we talked about a few minutes ago, on investing money. That you're investing in the county's roads, but you don't own the road. But that's an investment in capital. This is what that, what that's gonna refer to in audit. That's what that would be referred to as an investment.
So the nondiscretionary, I'm understanding what you're saying, is an asset juncture. The discretionary is a future possibly asset juncture.
Could be, if, if you own it. You know, Cousins Park's case, uh, the, the school system's actually the owner of the property. But I think it belongs to all the citizens of that and they own the government, so I don't know if you can do it better.
Nope. It was a landmark. But that's okay, Steve.
Have to send them their tax dollars. Who's gonna do the search when I can tell you that?
Just for the clarification, we do own some roads, do we not?
No, we do not.
No.
The township owns no roads.
Zero.
The only one that could own roads is in the road is, is a homeowner's association, that, that somebody that lives in an association. The township has a private road that they could be, actually, I don't know how their association thing's written, but they technically make it when they get on the roads.
We do. The only reason I ask this is that's, I, I, my long story, when I was looking into whether or not there, the event could host a burnout contest. The question, the answer I got back, it depends on if Clinton County owned the road or if it's a, that township owned the road. And so Main Street, it was unclear, I.
Uh, so Main Street belongs to Clinton County Road Commission.
Right. Okay.
Famous, the rest of the roads.
So I guess our idios fraction is the acceptance of this report.
We accept it, yes.
I made a motion to accept the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand forty-six, it says.
Yes, it does.
My number, unadvised by the planning commission.
I'll second it.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Butler, challenge, yes. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Almorigi?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Mr. Whistler?
Sure, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, for sure. All right, and next item, the three, and under fifteenth, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have listed under the superintendent's report, we don't often do this, but the superintendent's report is, um, the budgeting work sessions that this board will take place, um, take part in Thursday, October fourteenth at four P M. here in this room. And Monday, October eighteenth at five P M. here in this room prior to our, um, regular, regularly scheduled board meeting. At that meeting, you will decide how to proceed with going page by page or what approach you will take to going through the budget. The only thing I plan to do in preparation of the first meeting is to outline those items that are different and contained in each department line item, if that, if you find that would be helpful. If you have further direction on that, I would love to hear it, um, and how I can support you and assist you in that. If you would like the police chief or the fire chief to be available to have discussions with you during one of those meetings or a future meeting, 'cause I'm sure we'll have more than this week too. Um, I will, I, or, or any other member of staff that's submitted budget items. I'm happy to have whoever you would like at your disposal, um, to answer questions or to give you background on anything that you want. So, um, that's one thing that my office has been preparing for. Um, as, uh, trustee Almorigi mentioned, there will be a kickoff, um, meeting for the safe routes to school, um, this week. And I'm pleased to say that he's made arrangements if it rains, um, that we will be at the library center, which we have been promoting all along in case we cannot meet in case Cousins Park. Um, there will be, um, some, I, I won't call it dinner, but there will be food items, um, we'll have pizza, we'll have fruit, we will have, um, groceries. And I think for the members of public that choose to join us for that. Um, I'm, I'm excited about this. This is a project, um, we embarked on it, uh, in two thousand twelve, and it was, it went by the wayside. It, I didn't know at the time what a missed opportunity it was. So I think that, um, really I'm seeing now what we could have had all those years ago, um, probably over the cost of cost with the way that things have gone in the academy. But, um, I'm, I'm glad it's been, been brought together and seen done now, so I'm, I'm happy to be a part of that. I learned a lot. Um, I walked the route, um, on the park here on Duckster Road because it's, it's the main thoroughfare and it's where the township offices are. And, um, when you look at it through the eyes of an engineering student or a planning, um, professor, you look at it much differently. And I don't think I had that perspective before. So you see, you start to see the, the lack of paint, um, for children across the street safely. You start to see the lack of stop signs. You start to notice that the traffic's going a lot faster than forty-five. So, um, I don't have a young child that's walking to school. Um, he's nineteen now, but he, he didn't have to walk to school. Um, but as a parent, um, those things concern me and I'm, I'm glad to be part of this project. It, it has taken trustee Almorigi a lot of, um, energy, um, to, to put both of these projects together, and I appreciate that. Staff has not supported him at the level of which, um, I hope that we can support him in the future. But I think that we're gonna get there together, um, and we're all gonna grow and we're gonna learn. So our new planner, Miles Roblier, is on staff and he is doing an amazing job. He is a very intelligent and a fast learner. Um, and is already making, um, big contributions, I think, to the way things are running, um, in the planning and the building and zoning departments. We have posted for the recreation coordinator position. Um, at this time, we're just, it's open for, um, resumes and applications. We will be, um, moving ahead and putting together the group of individuals that will help go over the applications and we'll select candidates for the interview process and hopefully help us with that interview process and hopefully a selection process. So I'm very excited about that. Um, most of our time at this time is consumed with elections in the front office. Um, at this time, and, and I don't mean to take anything away from you and your staff, but how many absentee ballots have we processed?
I think we're up close to eleven hundred.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so, um, this, this staff of, um, three, four people up front is, is, um, not only has distributed the absent voter applications, but are now issuing actual ballots. Um, and the entire staff prepares for November, um, second.
Yes.
Um, for people, we, we, we very much in this community have people that would prefer to vote by mail or, or ballot, absent ballot. And we do have people that are proud to vote on that day and vote in person. So we will make sure that it's safe for whichever way people determine they would like to vote, that they can have that opportunity to do so safely. So if you have any questions for me?
Yes, just a very quick one.
Sure.
What is it different from, so page by page, or obviously we'll have others, they'll say, no mark, differences, different from what?
Um, so in the past, um, so what I will do, I'll, I'll take those two separate things. I can prepare you an document that tells you where, um, the asks, the big asks are. The police department has asked for a replacement for one police officer that is retiring and the addition of another police officer full-time. They have asked for, um, to replace the K nine, um, vehicle, um, the cruiser, the K nine cruiser. So what I will do is I can outline department by department what those items are that are contributing to the difference from the year previous. What are the big things that they're requesting?
From last year.
Yeah, sorry.
From last year.
In the fire department, they're requesting additional staffing. Um, in the clerk's department, in, in honor elections, she's asking for a tabulator to help with absent ballot, absent voter ballots. So I can tell you what those ticket, those bigger ticket items are that are different from the year previous.
Thank you.
Have you got a new copy available now? Have you been able to?
No.
Did someone edit that?
No.
No?
No, I have done no work since I issued it. Because you all have not had a chance to go through it or have discussions as a full board, I have not modified anything.
Okay.
So what, what I gave you the first time is, is other than reformatting it, the only thing I did was to make it bigger and, and bigger. Um, but, but I, really my introduction of that budget, there really is no reason for me to do anything to it until you all have some discussions about it.
Okay.
So, um, the, the second thing you asked is going page by page.
No, this.
Um, in the past, some people have gone right to the police department and they wanna talk about the police department. Others have wanted to go, um, township board, to the supervisor's page, to the clerk's page, to, and go page by page. So I'm happy to do it any which way this board.
Nope, it's. You answered my question, so I'm good. Is there anybody else?
Perfect.
No questions, okay.
Page by page works very well.
I like page by page. Doesn't he?
You are.
Good man.
Happy to do it.
See those great lines in the life? Okay, you don't really like it or not. Um, we're going sixteen, which is your public cabinet. And these are questions according to what this is required, short, have we answered? Have you posted to, have you posted to the board? Um, it's within your three minutes. If in fact you're asking a question to the board, your three minutes will continue. So, anybody?
Um, are we using the podium? Is my pen not, is that not working?
No, it's working.
Uh, I'm gonna get a little foggy here, so let me take a.
I might get a little foggy here, so let me take that off. Mr. Westphaler, thank you. I can, now I can't see you. I wanted to thank you, because I realized that, that the lady you were talking about at the beginning of the meeting is me. Thank you, I heard you, I, you, you heard me, more importantly.
Yes, I do.
And you listened to what I had to say, and it means a great deal to me that you did that, and that you took it upon yourself to take your part and research that, and you did some digging, you worked hard, you put in time looking up information and facts that you thought were important to me, and I want you to know that I see you and I hear you too, thank you. But I did not misunderstand that the board of trustees is capable of foreclosing on my house. I do realize that they don't make tax decisions, but there are some of you that may be sitting on a board, or a committee, that I do need to apply to, maybe through the board of reviews, plus I'll need to be working as well with, with the clerk's office, different people in the clerk's office, asking for, what is it, my word, exemption, or partial exemption. So I will be, you know, needing to work together with, with you. And that was in regards to my statement of coming down, putting myself out there, or just kind of laying low, under the radar, so to speak. But I, I will be coming in for help with that, just navigating the complicatedness of it all. So, thank you again, and I will take whatever printed material then, that you had for me. Further down the line, on other lines, notify the public of what you are or you are not doing. Thank you, sir. And I know that the Parks and Rec is in coordination with volunteer citizens for the trunk or treat, I think that's, that's great, they said on the community site that you all were working together, great. And that you are going to be, is that going to be posted on the, on the website, your job posting?
It is currently.
It is now, okay, I couldn't get on today, so I didn't know.
And if you want to, you can come, we can print the materials out for you.
That's all.
Or anybody, I'm just saying that for you and for anybody.
For everybody, okay, thank you. And once again, don't forget about Park Lake and your budget, and your CIP, and I'm glad that the safe passage went well, and you had a good turnout. Thank you all very much. I am a really bad dude, thanks, so I'm going home.
Thank you.
Oh, and who is this?
This is our deputy clerk, April Dunham, and our clerk is going to be out of town, so she is attending tonight, so she could help take minutes, and then, and then prepare those for the next meeting.
Great, nice to meet you.
Thanks, Meg. Is there anybody else?
George Baker, State Road, any slants in there?
I just want to thank all those that serve here on this board, and our community, and other boards. I wanted to mention also about the Webster Road, when that, that committee was formed, it was to, what I assumed was to get the basics started, you know, and then, so I do know that we have got, like, some of the options, that was the initial focus, was to see what options we did have, within that, that happened with Dan at the county, the year, year two, year and a half ago, or whatever it was. And so that's where that kind of initially started, and it was just on the road committee, and then we knew that that was going to happen, then he brought it before the board, so then we, they formed the committee to see what, you know, what options we have. So I do know that we are going to be engaging the public, that was discussed heavily during the last meeting, so that will be coming up, and that's why we come up with some of the options we have, but, yeah, there's a lot more discussion, that's kind of why it's going to not go as fast as I'd obviously like. And I'm also thankful for the sidewalk walk that we did, that was, even though I'd been involved with other things, it was very informative to me to see, you know, I haven't walked through there like that in a long time, and that with MSU, I just want to thank MSU too, for all their input. They were very, very well-prepared, and it was very organized, and well put together, and did a nice job leading us through that, Jason, thank you. You guys have a good week.
Just make a couple comments.
Do you have?
Well, I'm related to what Mr. Baker pointed out. I, I thank you for your comments, I, I do, I look forward to the Webster Road committee, and their efforts. I know it means, I very much appreciate, you know, the expertise, as well as all the work that that committee has put into that. I also hope that there can be more collaboration between State Routes to School and Webster Road, because there should be a single plan continually between, with the sidewalk infrastructure across the city, so.
That was, I did discuss also a question?
Yeah.
Was there anybody else in the public comments? Jill?
Hello, my name is Jill Sandercock. I've lived in Bath Township for thirty-seven years. I'll be honest, I don't participate in these meetings, I think I've been to three in the thirty-seven years that I've lived here. I vote for people that I think care about the best interest of Bath Township, and this is why I voted for Marie Howe. She was, she has integrity, she cares about how our township money is spent, and that we're doing everything legally. It came to my attention, on Facebook, of all places, that members of this group have in effect removed Marie's powers. I consider this a dirty politics. Shame on all of you that participated in that. I think it should be illegal, you've taken away my vote. I would ask that you return her powers, and do so quickly. I promise, if any of you run for office again, I will make it known to all the Bath Township voters, who the dirty politicians are. You were elected to make Bath Township a better place to live, you need to work together to make Bath better. And to Ryan, I'm a fellow Chippewa, Ryan, shame on you, you've brought shame to CMU.
Anybody else in this comments? Well, good. All right, we're going to go to seventeen, which is the board member comment. You get to take part of yours, Jason.
What's that?
You take part of yours, that you already made with George.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you have more?
I've got lots more. At this time, I, I, all I will say is, I want to thank Karen for your comments, I do truly understand how much work, and how much blood and energy and passion and soul goes into this job, and not only for everyone themselves, and so I recognize that, I do that, and where I push, I do so with the best intentions, and so I really appreciate our relationship, and I'm very excited about the future, and what we all can achieve.
Thank you. Jill?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody, all four of you that made it through the whole meeting. And Jeremy, congratulations. That's just for me.
All right, thank you. Treasure this foster.
Just thank everybody for tonight, and coming, and all the comments, and everybody's participation. Drive safe on the way home.
Actually, that's a dino. So did Joe, I have to say the same thing, thank you for the four that stayed. Sometimes it's a little boring, sometimes it gets a little tough, those chairs aren't the most comfortable place to sit in, but thank you for staying, so hopefully more will come next time. And I would agree with Steve, and Joe, so, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
In my absence last week, I sat and watched the board meeting, and I'm sorry, Jason, but you, you do back off every time you go to talk.
Sorry.
And, but I, but I, I learn a lot from listening to, and not being able to hear certain people, and especially on the podium, and you all have a good night.
All right, it looks like we're on eighteen, which is adjournment.
I move adjournment.
Sure. Ms. Butler, yes, Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Fius Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Almarigi?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Westphal?
Yes.
Ms. How?
Yes.
You need something to do then?
No, thank you.